Would please, please silence your cell phones, put them on vibrate. And for anybody who is attending on the Zoom would ask you to please keep your, your lines muted unless you're called on to speak. Obviously Alderman Schmelsing, you may unmute anytime you need to get my attention since you're one of the members of the council. So yeah, well, I'm not always looking down here, so I may not see you do that. So all right, ready to get started? I will go ahead and call the common counsel for the city of Glendale to order. And would ask if Alderman Gelhard would lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Adam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic.
Here.
Alderman Dougherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelsing.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
All right, everyone is present. First item tonight is a presentation by Brett Perry from the president of the Milwaukee Waukesha County Beekeepers Association. So welcome. Yeah, so as you know, past meetings, we've had a couple of conversations about bees before. Alderman Dougherty has actually submitted some model ordinance language we might consider. But as we talked with the director of planning and development, he said it would be helpful if we had a presentation about what beekeeping means. It's a way of informing the public as to how bees are kept and what that means for a community when there are bees in the community. So and we used to allow beekeeping in the city of Glendale. Matter of fact, Callis Honey was located in Alderman Dougherty's district on Sunny Point Road for many years. So that was permitted at one point. And so consideration now to bring it back and certainly having this discussion now as we're wrapping up no mow May, where my lawn is much higher than I've ever let it get in its life. So I'm actually mowing before the end of the month. But since we've been talking about no mow May to protect the bees, we thought we would have a conversation today about beekeeping. So Mr. Perry, thank you so much for coming and interested to hear what you have to say about beekeeping.
Great, thank you so much for inviting me here. My name is Brett Perry. I have been a beekeeper for about nine years and everybody always asks, how did you get into beekeeping? This happens when you stay up too late at night researching things on the internet and you figure it costs too much. And it's way too far to go to Alaska and become a fisherman. So beekeeping was the next best option. It doesn't involve weeding and I figured I can make my own beehive. And so, yeah, ordered some bees. You get bees from California or Georgia, they come in a package. They have a little tin can in there of sugar water. That's their sack lunch while they get traveled up from here. They have a queen in there and about 9,000 bees and it's a little wooden box with screened sides. And went to this guy's house and he has a whole bunch of them out there and he picks them up and hands two of them to me. And I put my hands out and the look on my face told him I was brand new at this. And he said, put them down gently. And he explained how we would put them in a hive. So a beekeeper probably is going to spend about $350 in hardware to get a colony. Just the framework, the building structure that they live in. They're going to spend about right now about 135 to $185 to get a package of bees. So you're plus your suit and everything, you're probably in this for five or 600 bucks to get bees. And bees are only available really in the spring. We get them up here and they start growing. And then you would, if you have a colony that's really strong, bees look at it and say, hey, there's a lot of flowers out there. Let's split. So for an urban beekeeper and what we teach in our club, one of the main concepts is managing bees. Bees are not a Ron Popeye thing. You can't just set it and forget it. They, they need to be managed and so they will grow and they need space. And so we add more stories to their building so they have room to store honey. And you take into account those things. They do have some predators, mites and things that we have to account for in order to maintain healthy bees. But they will actually enjoy the city of Glendale because the, all of the boulevards, all of the amount of flowers that we have actually is better for bees than even some countryside areas, which is just a huge monocrop of corn and things that don't provide pollen for bees. So urban bees do very well. There are actually bees on the, well, I looked a few of these up, but we have bees down on the Pfister. We have bees on the building on Second and Bruce Street on the roof. There are probably about eight hives on the city hall in Chicago. And then they've just extended and put some beehives on their property at the cultural center. There are rooftop hives on Redeemer Lutheran, the Hilton City Center Garage, the Pfister. Several local golf courses have hives on the course. As you're golfing along, you'll see them off in the corner. So I think that those things prove that having hives nearby is not highly dangerous. It's not going to cause problems. My analogy is always, you know, if you sight them properly, the bees fly out the front of the hive. They need about 10 to 15 feet before they hit something so they have time to gain some altitude. If you sight bees away from people and away from your neighbor's property, they're going to head out from the front of the hive until they reach something. And then they're going to go higher to get over it. So if there's a fence, a hedge, a something that causes them to rise up, they will go up and over and stay at that height. So if you have a neighbor who has a swing set and they're like, I don't want all the bees bothering my kids on the swing set. As long as you have a flyway barrier and the proper sighting, the bees will go up and above and they're headed out looking for trees. They're looking for large areas of forage. So they aren't necessarily going to find every single little flower, but you know, eventually they'll get around to it. But it's not just going to be hordes of bees. So that's, you know, basically in Wauwatosa, when we came up with the ordinance, you know, they said, hey, you need your neighbor's approval. You need all of these things. And I think that the communication with the neighbor is a huge benefit. You want them to know, hey, there's bees here, but there are bees everywhere. There are stinging insects that are, all of them are undocumented, unlisted and unlicensed in nature. And so, yeah, we're adding a concentration to that hive, but managed bees do very well. For a beekeeper, probably in late August, things get dry, bees get a little defensive. I take the lid off and they're going to be kind of mad at me. But outside of that, they're not going around hunting people, you know, in the next yard or the next block over. They're really just concentrating on saying, don't take my honey. Don't take what I've spent all summer trying to get, so.
I've got a couple of questions. When did TOSO approve bees beekeeping?
Oh, boy.
Been a while?
Yes, it's probably been four or five years.
Okay, do you know approximately how many, so this is a city of about 45,000 people. Do you know how many beekeepers there are in the city?
I think when I checked a couple of years after the permit, they probably only sold about five permits.
Okay.
So I, I think there's probably, there's, there's probably a number of ghost hives on any given time stretch. But they came up with, and this is something John and I talked about as a recommendation was a beekeeper who has two hives has something to compare them against. One of them could be growing really well, one of them can't. You can share resources. Two hives is a, is a good synergy for a beekeeper. With the management of the swarms, you do need a place to put that extra queen or, or, or if, you know, as a beekeeper, one of our services to the community is somebody can call and say, look, I found a hanging bunch of bees in a tree, which is a swarm. Swarming is the old queen is, you know, like the old manager at McDonald's. She takes all the senior workers and they go and they find a new place to franchise. They leave the young manager and all the young workers at the old McDonald's figuring, well, you already have a building. You'll do fine. We can make do. They go out, they'll start a new colony and that's just bees way of procreating this swarming activity. A swarm of bees goes out and finds a suitable cavity and they move into it. As beekeepers, we want to prevent that. We want to, we want them to not go out and work for themselves and we want them to continue to work for us and we get the profits. It is something that we get calls at the bee club all the time. Hey, I got bees hanging off the side of my shed. Hey, I got this. And as a beekeeper, I can go over there and I can scoop them into a box or I can coax them in. I've even had it where you set the box down in front of them and they all turn as one and wander into the box. They know what it smells like. They're looking for a dark enclosed space and they just walk in and you close the lid and you pack it up and you take it over to your apiary. And they, they get out the next day and they start doing circles up in the sky. They orientate themselves. They'll fly for approximately three miles from the hive in any given direction to get food. So they, they have quite a wide range, which is why at the beehive, you're not going to get a whole lot of activity one yard over. I could sit in my backyard and watch my bees come in and out and they come over the garage and they come down and they land. I've had some folks who had a beehive, a natural one in their tree and she would gather her girlfriends and some binoculars and they'd sit on the front porch. And they would check the color of the pollen on the bees legs as they came in and figure out which direction they were coming from. So they were bee watching. And, and so the, these are the opportunities that we have as urban beekeepers to help people understand this. But I've probably never been more connected to the seasons and even looking at dandelions going, oh, look, my bees are going to be all over those. And you start to even summers, springs like this, you're, you're kind of biding your time going, man, this cold weather is killing us. Like my poor bees are ready to go and they got nothing to do. And, and so, you know, it is a way for somebody in the city to be much more connected to that, to that kind of almost that farming ethos. And that weather matters and it matters not because I have to wear galoshes that day, so.
We had a big discussion a few years ago over whether or not we should allow backyard chickens.
Right.
And we have, we finally did. And I think we have a handful of people, three or four people in the entire city that actually have.
Right.
Because there's a huge cost in building a coop and going through all of that. And it sounds like you're talking about a significant outlay of expenditure at the beginning, plus training you have to go through to know what you're doing, right?
Yeah. Um, Milwaukee had a pretty heavy duty phrase in there. They're, they wanted you to go through the UW extension training, master beekeepers class. Beekeeping is not rocket science. You should have some information, but you know, most of us have picked up what we know by doing it. Our club really promotes the idea of getting a bee mentor, someone to help show you what to do. You know, it, it truly, mismanaged bees are likely to swarm and that's probably the worst case scenario. Mismanaged bees are not going to suddenly become feral and start attacking people. And so, so those, you know, the person is going to lose their investment and then they're going to kind of wander away from beekeeping. But it is good to have a, an encouragement or something that says, you know, you should probably know what you're doing before you do this. Cause they are living organisms and, you know, so that, that is something we've always encouraged in any of the discussions with ordinances and things that people have a clue of what they're getting into.
Alderman Dougherty.
I'll be in favor, but I just want to ask for a public question.
Sure.
In the years you've been in it and the years in TOSA, has there been any issues?
None that I'm aware of in Wauwatosa. And I've gotten calls from the Department of Neighborhood Services in Milwaukee to come and help gather some bees that actually the hive had fallen over and it was causing problems for people. And, and so I think that it really would. I mean, that was probably the only thing that we've run into is the bees fell over and they couldn't find the beekeeper. And so they had one of us come and help put it back together so that the bees would calm back down. And my phone has turned itself on.
So happens.
Yeah.
Any other questions from members of the council? Well, thank you so much. This was very informative. We are going to take some public comment in a few minutes and we'll see if anyone has any, any input. I did see, we put some stuff out on social media and I did see some comments there, all of them positive.
Right.
Yeah, and we're not prepared tonight to do an ordinance. We're just trying to get information.
Sure. And I mean, as the president of the club, we are prepared to, to help. We are so, you know, we can provide or, or help work with you guys to say, if, if you were to start getting calls for bee swarms, who do we call? We can give you a number that links into a bunch of beekeepers and somebody could come and grab those bees and we would turn them into productive bees. So that is something that as beekeepers, we feel is our, you know, a way to, to serve the community around us. Because we do have a special skillset and we can use that to help people before those bees decide to make a home in their sapet. And that's going to cost money to get them out. So, yeah, and that's, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on then to public comments. This is the part of the meeting where Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? Okay, I don't see anybody in the council chambers. Is there anybody on the Zoom that wants to speak to a non-agenda item? Mr. Swanson. You may unmute.
Sorry, my comment was actually on the beekeeping, so my apologies.
Oh, that's okay. We'll call on you in just a couple of minutes. We are going to do the beekeeping input in just a minute. Any other non-agenda item call or non-agenda item comments? All right, the next item then is the adoption of the consent agenda, which had the minutes for our last meeting, the monthly reports from staff and a denial of a claim. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
It's moved.
Move Alderman Schmelsing, is there a second? Second by Alderman Bukovic. Not seeing any discussion without objection, we will consider the consent agenda approved and move forward. All right, the next item moving into our new business is discussion and public comment regarding beekeeping within the city of Glendale. Mr. Swanson, this is now the time I call on you. If you'd say your name and address, please.
Brian Swanson, 1820 West Wayside Drive, Glendale, Wisconsin. I think it's a positive thing that doing the beekeeping, I think this can definitely help out with everyone's plants and any vegetable gardens or fruit gardens that they have as well in the community in keeping them growing healthy and just helping the environments in general. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone in the chambers or anyone else online? Alderman Gelhard, go ahead.
Yes, one of the concerns I just thought about was the notion of, for instance, you know, a small child or an animal curious about the beehive wandering in and perhaps, you know, getting stung, getting injured that way. And I don't know if there's anything that we could do to prevent that from happening. But I guess it's a concern that, you know, I thought about in the context of this issue.
And we can have, when, when staff works on an ordinance, could address that issue? Or would you, you need to approach the microphone to the folks on the Zoom, can't hear you. Yeah.
I would say that the communication with your neighbors is going to help them identify the same way as if you have a dog. If you have anything else, if you have a pool, you know, you can put a fence around a pool. Beehives are going to be sighted away from areas, but there are beehives in the trial gardens at Burner Botanical Gardens. So there are beehives in the area where people are walking and the public is allowed to go in that space. So, you know, unless an unattended child goes up and sticks his nose right in front of the hive, you know, their, their, their chances of getting stung are the same as if they stepped on a bumblebee or happened to walk across a ground wasp nest. So, you know, it is that communication piece, I think, that lets your neighbors know, hey, I do have bees back here. We always tell our beekeepers, you know, a jar of honey goes a long way to keeping things, you know, good between your neighbors. But I have not heard of that happening in our club. And like I said, I've been part of the club for eight years, president the last two years. We have not had any significant incidences where somebody has said, oh, man, you know, somebody got into my hives. I mean, we've had some hives that were vandalized, kids kicked them over and they might've got stung a couple of times. But, you know, those were probably the only people that unintentionally got into something like that.
Any other comments from members of the council or from anyone in the audience, anyone on the Zoom?
I got one question.
Yep, Alderman Schmelsing, go ahead.
So only thing I have is maybe a question about neighbors who may have allergies or something along those lines. How is that kind of addressed in some of these ordinances? Is there like, you know, I know, looked at the TOSA one and it looks like you do need to get neighbor approval. You know, I don't know if that's, something should be more taken into consideration so you don't have one person just not liking it if they have a reasonable reason. Just wanted to get your feedback on that and how that's done.
Do you know how TOSO or other places handle the issue of allergies?
We did discuss that. They had some input from the health department. There are approximately 140 other stinging pollinators in Wisconsin. There are a lot of insects that you could get stung by. If you are allergic, you probably already have those precautions in place. Bees are not, they can, they can only sting once and then they die. Bees don't normally swarm like you see like Africanized hives or anything from down south. It isn't that kind of activity. So if someone is going to get dinged, they're going to get it once or twice. Bees actually don't want to sting you, so they, they, they run at you, they headbutt you. They do a bunch of things to let you know, I don't like you before they really, they really haul off and let you have it. So, you know, it is a concern, but again, I feel like those are addressed with the communication. And someone who has a condition has already taken precautions to protect themselves in that condition. So, you know, it, it doesn't seem like this increases that unreasonably.
Okay, so ultimately the risk of a neighbor having a hive doesn't necessarily, if you have the right flyways established, it wouldn't really increase the risk to the, to the neighbor.
Oh, I would sit out in my own backyard and have campfires and coffee and breakfast. And I mean, you, you can sit within a certain direction. I'm not going to sit right in front of the, the end of the runway, but you know, off to the side. It really is, you know, they, they're curious, but they're not going to bother you. Anybody can get stung just walking out, you know, in the field. So, you know, it's probably about the same incidence. At least from my experience, I'm not a scientist, just a beekeeper.
Fair enough. Thank you for the insight.
Alderwoman Shaw.
I'm going back to the question that Alderman Schmelsing had regarding allergies. I'm only asking because I am a person that does have allergies. And what if you've never been stung and don't know if you're allergic to be? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think a doctor would have to answer that one. For most of our beekeepers, you know, that is a developed allergy. I think it's a very small percentage of people who have a significant anaphylactic reaction to the very first sting. But anaphylaxis develops within 15 to 20 minutes. And that would require medical intervention, you know, if it's severe anaphylaxis. But again, the, I mean, compared to the number of actual insects that are out there, the wasps, the hornets, the, all of those things which are invading your picnic, your table, your, all those things. Honeybees are not gonna, they aren't there to investigate your picnic. They're out trying to find the trees that are pollinating or just, just budding. They're out trying to find a large section of something there. They're looking for, you know, big areas. And, and so, you know, if you run into a bee, it's kind of a random occurrence unless you were like, again, right in the flyway.
Thank you. I just, like I said, curious because.
Yep. It's, it's possible. I mean, you know, it is, any of those things are possible. And as a beekeeper, we should not discount that possibility and/or that fear. Because you can't write it off. But, you know, with good planning and, you know, some clear communication, I think that we are capable of, of working around those issues. And as long as we're aware of it and, and you, you take some time to address your neighbor's concerns, you could be a very good neighbor as a beekeeper.
Again, it would be new for me, but I know I also have a neighbor who I didn't realize every time he gets stung, it gets worse each time. But he definitely carries an EpiPen.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, I suit up, I wear gloves, I wear a full suit. Because I like to keep beekeeping for a long portion of my life and not develop an allergy. So the less things I get, the better off I am.
All right, any other comments, anyone online? If you are online and want to make a comment, you can unmute and state your name and address. All right, well, thank you so much. Really appreciate you answering our questions.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and we've given staff now a bunch of data to work on potential ordinance to bring back to us. All right, the next item is item 5B, review and approval of the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement program. This was actually brought to us at our last meeting and was on the agenda for tonight. And I'm just going to ask, are we being asked to consider this tonight? Or we're, I had a couple of interactions earlier today with some staff who said we might want to lay this over for one more meeting.
Whatever the city council wants to do, we are just bringing it forward because there was a couple of items that were inadvertently left off the CIP plan. Mainly two of them, so we're bringing it back for further discussion.
Okay, so would you, are we prepared to identify what items are new tonight or from last mass meeting or?
Charlie, do you want to go over those?
One of my comments, since I wasn't here last, last meeting, I could tell that his color coding on the front tells you a lot though, too.
Right, right. I didn't, so we, we had it at our last meeting for discussion. It was to be brought back tonight for approval, but I did talk to staff earlier today who indicated there might be a couple of changes. And we, if we wanted an extra meeting to, to consider and vote on it next meeting, we can certainly do that. So what, what is new or change from two weeks ago?
Well, the only thing that wasn't, wasn't added and was supposed to be carried over from 23 to 22 was the nuisance repairs and the, the traffic calming measures. So those were not included at all. Somehow they dropped.
Thanks, Nick.
So the thought was to put it in 23, but I think as you indicated, I think you did talk to staff today that there might be some things that probably wanted to be fine tuned. I know there were a couple of other manic questions. And we just, we were briefly talking with Alderman Schmelsing previously about a couple of his questions. So I don't know, again, if that's council's desire to, to lay it over to June, the next June, first June meeting. And then we could prepare, make sure we got everything dotted, eyes dotted, Ts cross type thing. Have the finance director look at it and make sure too. I think the other concern was too that we had the funding, proper funding in for what we approved or you approved at the May 9th meeting for the DOT commitments and things like that, to make sure all those numbers are in place. Cause those are in the contracts.
Okay, I just asked, does the council have any questions?
It was, just to finish that.
Can you pull the microphone in front of you? Yep.
A version management, there were literally seven or eight versions of the spreadsheet. And I think that there was just an inadvertent sort of mix up with the, with the versions that was transmitted to you.
Okay. Are there any questions from?
And to accommodate the staff's concerns, I would like to, I move to postpone this decision voting until the first June meeting.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second now.
Alderman Shaw to postpone, second by Alderman Dougherty. Any further discussion or any questions from members of the council?
Only question.
Alderman Gelhard then Alderman Schmelsing.
This is just, any questions on the motion to put it over, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or if you have questions about, you know, about the capital improvement plan you'd like answered, that you, so you can think about it over the next two weeks, you can ask those too.
Okay, well, actually I had, I did have a question about some of these, but I am in favor of putting it over.
Okay.
If we're moving, if we're voting on that, then.
Okay, Alderman Schmelsing, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, is there any implications of waiting? I figure, you know, we can decide then or now. But yeah, I just thought I'd ask staff if they have any planned work that they needed this decision sooner than later on.
This is a long-term plan, Alderman Schmelsing. We normally approve it in June anyway. It just, Meryl was trying to, you know, make sure that he wrapped things up as the interim and he thought he would get this completed before he finished. So that's why it was brought to us early, but normally we approve it in June anyway.
Okay, that's, that's good. I do have some questions about it in general, but yeah, that we can move on the.
Okay. Well, once we vote to postpone it to the next meeting, we'd be moving on to the next agenda item. So did you want to ask questions now for staff that, because they may or may not have answers tonight. They may have to have some time to get back to us and email us with answers. So I'm going to go ahead and let Alderman Gelhard, since I know he had questions, and then I'll come back to Alderman Schmelsing.
All right, just looking at the description in the paragraph that starts addition of 180,000 for seven speed tables. So it's identified as speed tables, you know, in the introduction there and then in the narrative. But then when it's highlighted, it says speed humps slash table. So is it speed humps or is it speed tables?
But in, we put in speed tables in the description because it was the most expensive option. That's why it was titled that way. There's certainly the option to do any one of them or none of them.
I'm assuming talking a combination thereof.
Budget for the most expensive one, then you can always bring that down.
That would be correct.
Okay.
In my opinion, the, the speed humps, yeah, I don't know, they're, they're difficult to navigate. The speed tables are a lot easier to.
The speed tables are a lot easier to, to navigate. I, I think they probably serve the same purpose, but you, you can really, you know, break an axle on the speed humps if you don't know that they're there, so.
Yes, sir, you can. And this is part of the issue that Charlie and I brought up to Carl. This is a remnant sort of idea from the last month, last month, last year's effort. In fact, we've, you know, it dates from August ninth of twenty-one. We don't believe that this is a long-term sort of solution to what we were talking about. So this, for example, this is a good example of an item that we would removed from the CIP that was presented to you. So in June, hopefully you won't have this under consideration.
Alderman Schmelsing.
I was just going to ask about the salt storage facility. Is there any detail on that? It just looked like it was a newer item. I was just curious what that was. Is that like the brine or is it just the salt, like?
Alderman Schmelsing, that refers to the reconfiguration of our existing storage area in the back to better access and store our salt. So by removing some barriers and relocating maybe some walls, we are thinking that we're, we're going to sort of reconfigure that area, put the salt on the east side of the facility, better circulation for our residents who, who may come off a drop site. So it's not a new structure, it's a different way of looking at our yard for salt structure, so, salt storage.
Thank you. Yep, I just didn't know what that one was, so appreciate it. And, yeah, and just a comment, I, I know we talked earlier about, you know, some of the things that the objective of the, the range line and green tree is to traffic calm. And there's lots of different options, so I don't think we had locked in on anything in particular. So we can continue those conversations. I'll send out some feedback based on our prior conversation. So thank you for that earlier.
All right, Alderman Vukovich.
I need you to repeat what you just said, because the reason being is I have been fighting for six years for some of these in my district because they are needed. There is nothing, no matter what they do, will stop them. We have put stop signs. We've put, you know, all kinds of things that we have tried. And because of the way the district is formed with so many speeding, I mean, very tra- high traffic areas like on Glendale Avenue where you try to go from Green Bay to Port. The speed there, no matter what we do, and we've been watching it, it still is there. There's a lot that's a very residential where a lot of kids are. Amarn, I sat there for twenty minutes, actually two weeks ago, just talking to a neighbor and watched at least seven cars go right through the stop sign that's sitting there and at spa- fast speed. So this is some of my district and most of these are in my district, in our areas. I just want to make sure I heard you say that they were going to be dropped, because then, you know, we go have an issue. And I think a discussion should be made, not necessarily just dropping them, but a discussion should be made.
Yes, I, I think that the, what I meant was that to list them individually isn't something that we are ready to do. However, as we were just discussing with Chief Ferguson and Alderman Schmelsing about the very sort of different things that traffic calming definitely can be done for traffic calming in his district, for example, we'll be looking at several options. What I would say is that this is the first time I'm hearing speed concerns in your district from an engineering standpoint.
Oh, and I understand.
I, I, you, you may have discussed the matter with administration or police department. But we'd be happy to assist in any way we can. If that is something that you would like us to look into and make sure that there's at least a line item for potential improvements, whatever they are. I think in general, though, I would be opposed to recommending from my place, speed bumps. I would, I would recommend working on traffic calming. Speed bumps may be part of the equation, but I wouldn't just list them at a capital plan.
That's very, what? Oh, I'm sorry. Just a brief, very brief, what does calming mean?
So calming means finding a balance. So slowing folks down involves inconveniencing motorists. People slow down when road conditions aren't optimal. So calming means to find a balance between folks who, the majority of the folks who observe all the rules and inconvenience those who don't.
I mean, just one example. It may not work there, but I just, I need.
For example, in many places in this town, we've been able to give motorists the impression that they are on a much narrower road than they actually are, like Bender Road, Range Line Road. And, and so that's one of the ways. We have used on Lydell, for example, north of Silver Spring, we've used what we call bump outs, which are really a means to narrow the road by, you know, fifteen, eighteen, sixteen feet, so that you have much less room to maneuver and it looks to you, it's a much narrower road, which slows you down. So those are only two examples. Speed bumps exist, obviously. However, my personal view on them as a traffic device is that they become different, they, they cause different problems than they, that they solve. So I see the list. I will look at the conditions. You and I and Chief perhaps should get together and you could better describe to us what you would like to see. And we can find a technical sort of social engineering solution to making things a little calmer.
All right, any other questions? All right, so the motion before us then is to lay this over to our next meeting, postpone the vote. So could I have a, I guess we'll call for a vote then. All those in favor of postponing to our first meeting in June, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We won't vote on this then until June. Thank you very much. Next is discussion and possible action for development agreement for planned unit development district for River Park Apartments, one six, one six, West Bender Road. Mr. Fellows, this has been before us so many times, or I think this is the final stop, right?
This is the final stop. As you know, planned development districts do have a lot of meetings. They have the, the general development plans, the specific development plans, and then we wrap up with a development agreement. This development agreement was put together by staff and our attorney and then provided to the developer for their review and they have okayed it. So it's pretty standard. There are some specific things in here that relate to the specific development. And those were items that actually were conditions upon the, the specific development plan as conditions were actually. Back on, all right, that they were incorporated into this document. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, Alderman Doherty?
Across the street, there was some rules on what they could have for fair market value rent. Does a percentage, we have eighty percent listed for this one. Is that the same percentage as across the street?
Across the street had the percentages listed because it was part of a, it had eleven affordable housing units in it. This one doesn't have any affordable housing units, it's all market rate?
Does not have any affordable housing units that we are aware of that would need any sort of city approval. The eighty percent upon review, since both Nathan and myself are new, we reviewed prior agreements and that sort of standard language that's been in a lot of the agreements in the past many years. So we just kept it as standard language.
There's no minimum, because the other one had some rules on what minimum pricing could be. In other words, the standard maintained there could be maintained because they'd have to charge a, a rent level that made it where people who were there were probably taking care of the place. And that's a neighborhood concern.
Right, no, I get that, but the, the development across the street, because the, it, they received home funds to help build the project, then they were required that the market rates had to be established because the home fund rate for the affordable housing was determined based on the market rate. And so in this particular case, it, it, it's not the same, they're not getting any outside assistance for the development. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve the development agreement, please?
I'm moved.
Baldorman Bailey, second of Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. The agreement is approved. All right, and John, you're staying put because you got the next item too. Consideration discussion regarding an application for a change of zoning for seventy-five, seventy-five North Port Washington Road. This is to change from a B one, H two business and commercial district to a planned unit development. This is for purposes of building a gas station and convenience store.
So this particular item at seventy-five, seventy-five, there currently is a gas station there. It's a fairly older gas station, a small facility. It's approximately about half of the property is developed and there's some undeveloped areas towards the west of the property.
In the boat storage on the.
Sure, there is boat storage, correct. So essentially the property.
That's what we've gotten complaints and calls about, just so you know, is the boat.
Yep. The property owner is entertaining the idea of selling the property to a new developer. They, a new owner, they are seeking a planned development district process for this and zoning. And just to remind you, planned development, there's this, the rezoning process and then the general development plan that goes through, starts off here at city council. If you move it forward this evening, then it would go to public, to planning commission. They would then schedule a public hearing. They would then make a recommendation to city council. City council then would consider having a public hearing and then there'd be a public hearing. And then you go through that and then we go through the general development, then end up with a development agreement at the end. So the drawings that you have before you are preliminary, but they do represent the, I think, the intent of the site plan in terms of the building, the convenience store, where the pumps would be. There'd be pumps up front as well as two in the back for diesel. And when I say back, I mean the west side of the property. And there would be one, right now there's four entrances. One of the entrances on Port Washington Road would be closed nearest the intersection to provide better circulation at the intersection. And then there would be two, two driveways current to remain on Calumet. They're proposing a fairly large convenience store with multiple entrances, coolers and those types of things. They plan on having a little bit more than just your standard convenience. So they're looking for things that will contribute to the neighborhood in terms of food and those types of things. The building is, kind of fits the residential character of the area with a hip roof, some gables, lots of glazing, a brick building on all four sides. And that's kind of a quick summary.
Okay, thank you. And is there somebody here tonight to make a presentation to us?
There is. The applicants here, I don't know if they want to make a presentation, but they are here. And if you give me a second, I was on the Zoom call, but I'm, I gotta find it to be able to show you the drawings. So, there we go.
Good question, Mo. He's doing, is this the old Applebee's property? Yes?
Heinz property.
Wasn't this where they got the boats? Didn't Wisconsin Athletic Club want to do?
There was a, there was a proposal a few years ago to make that a parking lot extension for the, for the Wisconsin Athletic Club that never, never went, never came to fruition.
Okay, I just went following along.
Yeah, yeah, it's that property.
Thank you.
Right now it's got a couple of big boats on it.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Kevin Parrish, I'm with PSE. I'm working with Jay, Jason Singh here. He's the potential developer. So the, the site plan, as you see, okay, in front of you, basically there is the northeast entrance on Port Washington Road that will be removed. The circuit, it's a semi.
You'll need to move the mics ears. It's a directional mic and it's really tricky. If you're not talking right into it, the people on the Zoom can't hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
So the, there's a semi truck that shows access to the diesel pumps on the backside that John was mentioning. Let me see. This is the floor plan. So obviously the shelving, coolers, general convenience store. This is the elevation drawing. So it's all brick, a lot of larger windows, the hip roof. That's it, huh? Okay.
And just so you, just so you're aware for the planning commission, if it does move forward to this evening, last Friday, and then today I did get landscaping plans, lighting plans, a bunch of other supporting documents.
Okay, those would be sent to the plan commission?
Correct, they were just, they, they prepared them and submitted them on Friday and, and some this morning, so.
So that's why they're not in our packets here, but they would be on the plan commission pack.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I do have some larger drawings, but I don't know if the people.
So if you want to show them to us first.
Sure.
And then the camera to show it to the, the, the folks is literally right behind you there. So you can show it to us first, then just turn it around for folks on the camera to see, so. Yeah, John, if you can stop sharing your screen then, but when he goes to show it to the camera, just so that folks on the Zoom can see.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we've seen the site plan. But will there be a fence separating the diesel from the diesel pumps from the homes behind it? Six foot at least? Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay. All right, so if you want to just show the same pictures the other direction then, so. We do have an alderman who, th- this is the only way he can see it tonight, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you just show the, the, that one and then if I'll pause on that for a minute. So Steve, that's the, that, that's a rendering of the building itself. And then he's got one more of the, with the pumps, showing you the pumps.
Yeah, looks much better than what we have there today, in my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, and I didn't see any boats in the picture, so. Yeah, all right, so I guess any members of the council have any questions before we ask for a motion to refer to the plan commission? All right, well, thank you for making the presentation. I guess at, at this point, can I get a motion to refer to the plan commission, please?
A second.
Moved by Alderman Gelhard and seconded by Alderman Doherty. All those in favor of referring to the plan commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight was the easy one. We refer you to the plan commission and I didn't see any boats, so. Because that's what John and I have gotten calls about. All right, thank you. It looks great. It's much improved, so. All right, and then one last item. This is an indemnification and hold harmless agreement for sixty, seventy-six North Port Washington Road. So replacing a private commercial sign in a public right of way. Mr. Fellows, this is like plan commission, you get to be at every item tonight, so.
So this particular item is for any dry cleaners that is look, going to be located a lot. So, uh, this particular item is for any dry cleaners that is look, going to be located, um, along, uh, North Port Washington Road. And they'd like to put a monument sign in front of their business. Uh, the property line for a number of these businesses is actually about, uh, ten to twelve feet from the facade of the buildings. There's a very big part of the front yard, which looks like a very big generous, uh, lawn, um, is actually part of the public right of way. Um, how the signs that are currently in the public right of way were approved, uh, we haven't been quite, uh, determined because they all, they've all been approved. But they're actually in the public right of way, which we don't allow private structures in the public right of way. So, uh, what we have before you is an indemnification and hold harmless agreement, which essentially says that, uh, the property owner is allowed to put the sign in, uh, the public right of way. They'll carry insurance on it. If it's hit, we're not, we're held harmless. If someone were to hurt themselves on it, we're held harmless, um, those types of things. So they take on the full responsibility as if it were on their property, um, but it is actually in the public right of way. It will be in the general alignment of the other monument signs along the corridor. So this particular document is one that, um, just kind of lays out who's responsible for it. And, um, if something happens, uh, it, uh, basically says that the city is not, um, responsible.
Alderman Doherty?
I think that's great. I'm just curious on the other signs. Do we have the same hold harmless or should we look into that?
Um, not that I've been able to find and yes, we probably should, um, going back to them. Uh, we may have some cooperation, um, on a case by case basis, but we also might get a property owner who says, well, you approved it. Um, and so it might just be waiting for, you know, the next time somebody wants to do something with the sign, that then we would, uh, trigger that. Um, it's only maybe six properties and I have not found any others in the city that are in a similar situation. I think it's just really the uniqueness of that particular area. The road over time has kind of moved as the freeway has been built and things like that. So it's just a rather unique situation in that particular location.
I just liked and compared everybody on the, you know, treated people the same or in the same boat.
Right. And in this case, we're trying to be as fair as we can with the current applicant to make sure that they can still have that sign and advertise their business and.
Yeah, I'm full in agreement of what you're doing on this one. I just feel the other ones ought to be the same.
Yep.
I'm assuming this is sort of template language. You can plug in different addresses and it's mostly the same thing we can reutilize.
Um, I, Nathan reviewed it and, and I would, I don't want to speak for him from a legal perspective, but I would say yes, pretty much so.
Okay. Auto woman Shaw, and then I'll go to attorney.
Out of curiosity, are any of the ones that are existing that we're questioning to go back to, are they by chance grandfathered in prior to when Port Washington was reconstructed?
I would say most of the signs have probably gone up in the last five to six years. There is one that's been up probably close to twenty, but I don't, I'm not quite sure. I, I, it was the Valvoline. I haven't gone back far enough to find that permit.
Yeah, because I'm just anxious and everything. There was a lot of grandfathering in until, for example, Soli, and not, yeah, Soli, not Solis, the other, um, ice cream place. But, um, they had, once they decided to change, they had to come into confirmation of what the new rules were. That's why I'm asking.
Attorney Bear? I was just going to mention that, uh, regardless of what was previously approved or how long they've been there, because they're in the public right of way. We have a lot of leverage to be able to say, well, you know, you, you need to work, work with us on this indemnity agreement. Or perhaps we'll make you take it out. So, yeah, we, we've got, we have some leverage there. They'll, they'll play ball with us.
A little arm twisting there.
Oh, me.
All right. Any, any other questions? All right. Can we get a motion then to approve the indemnification and hold harmless agreement for sixty, seventy-six North Port Road?
Move.
Moved by Alderman Doherty is her second.
Second.
Second, Baldorm and Gelhard. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right. Motion carries. Uh, commission committee board and staff reports. I'll start with number one.
If anyone is still interested in doing the Juneteenth, um, parade, please let me know. We have to decide and turn in information by the thirty-first. So.
Um, I, I, I mean, I think you do have a number of us that want to march and I did put something out over next door and had a few people send me messages. So I think we may have some community members want to join us.
Okay.
So I always say, go ahead and submit something. You'll, you'll, you'll have people joining us. So, uh, number, thank you.
And we'll get, once that happens, then we will get the information about where we line up, what time we line up, all that. Just so that'll come, uh, at the informational meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Number two of the report tonight. Number three.
Nothing this evening.
Number four.
Nothing to report.
Number five.
Well, you always have to have me talk about the Fourth of July. Um, we, uh, we are going with the, uh, the brick for alcohol sales only. We weren't able to have enough staffing for us to do it ourselves with, um, the Sprock Oasis staff as well as with the added need for volunteers. So, um, just feel like we haven't, uh, gotten the, the people coming out of their Netflix comas from the pandemic to, to really do that. But we are still looking to do lots of volunteers so that we can do the, uh, ticket sales. We'll have ticket booths and so please, I, I sent an email for that onto your, your constituents and try to get people signed up because we do want to, uh, optimize our revenues that way this year. So, uh, beyond that, the toys have signed, so we have them lined up. Ironically, it looks like the toys will be also at Bay Shore I saw now, um, a month later. So, um, so I guess you can come see them twice.
We got them first.
We got them first. Yes, yes. So, um, we, we gave refusal, I guess, of a different band because they had them first. So we got the toys. Um, but it's all good. We, uh, we like mixing them up the bands. So, yes, um, we've updated the Glen Dale, fourthofjuly.com website, the volunteer links out there. Please go and have people sign up. And I'm hoping to see a lot of you there serving your constituents, if not alcohol, um, with ticket sales or something. Thank you.
Steve, I think to me you had a question. Go ahead.
Yes.
Hand to your microphone.
Is there a, are we still having the kids parade? I've been looking to make sure that I wasn't for sure. And, okay.
Yes, the, the parade schedules out there as well. We're back to the original ten AM time for the kids parade, ten thirty for the, I guess, general parade. And that's because we need to make sure it plays well with the, um, the police shift chambers. So, so we'll have, um, hoping to keep things going throughout the day. But again, it's, it's going to take a lot of volunteer support to, um, to keep other activities going throughout the.
Thank you. Number six.
I know the North Shore Library met last Thursday and unfortunately I'm in, was unable to attend because I had to work. And music in the Glenn, you had a re, update from city, uh, city administrator Warwick with regards to who's playing. And I, there's one band that I'm still working with to finalize their, um, contract. And I've been working with Attorney Bear with regards to that, to make sure that it's amicable, however you pronounce that, for the city as well as for the band, because I understand where he's coming from. And I've also known he's got really good reviews. But, uh, welcome to Glendale, working on behalf of the marketing aspect. They've been doing very well, getting everything up and published via social media. And I know there should be getting the books out, uh, finished up soon. So, but other than that, I'm here with pain.
Sorry to hear that. Thank you though for your report. Okay, now we'll go around staff. Chief?
A quick question before I move on.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Have, have we heard anything new on the amount of funds raised or anything with the library? I, I know you haven't been at the.
Oh, yes. And I meant to give this update actually at our last meeting because you had asked about it last time. And so I was prepared at our last meeting and then in this portion of reports, forgot. So I'm sorry. Uh, the library committee, um, has been working with a number of donors who are in the final stages right now of negotiating and signing contracts. So they're going to be working on a probably a multi-year, uh, like we did with the park, not for ten years, but for several years. So some of the larger donors, you know, are going to give a million dollars at once. They're going to give, you know, it's like two fifty for four years or whatever they, they agreed to in their terms. So, um, it, uh, President Walney is prepared to be at our second meeting in June, which will be the meeting where this council determines whether or not I sign the permanent agreement. And he will be giving us a full report at that meeting. Um, let me just, uh, find the report that I had prepared for you last time. All right. Um, so, uh, former baseball commissioner Bud Seelig, uh, they're in advanced talks with him on his sizable gift. Uh, they are planning to have a Seelig Room at the library. Um, so, and he is also the co-chair of the fundraising effort along with Mary Ann Lubar, uh, whose husband's name is on the business school at UWM. So, uh, people who've given a lot and raised a lot of money. Uh, Maria and Lubar is also working right now on a structured gift. Um, they, she has met with the architect. Uh, she's met the new library director and she's also been, uh, helping them to arrange a, a large list of names of people to add on to their sizable donations. So Seelig and Lubar will be the two large donations. And like I said, they will be structured. So if you ask the question at the end of June, how much money is in the bank? What they're going to be able to say is here's how much we have in signed agreements and contracts. So they will be, they will be agreements and contracts. They will.
I'd like it to actually be numbers as opposed to previous times. It's been nice conversation, but it's not numbers.
Well, there's different people. The foundation is not in charge of this. This is being led by President Walney, by President Fraser from Fox Point. I mean, they, they have been out raising money and they happen to have.
It's on these structured.
They have a lake drive in their communities. We don't.
But are they talking about with this structured money, then we'll be on the hook for pieces of it? Is that what this is going to look like?
No, all, everything will be accounted for and that's what he's going to be saying. His, his community doesn't want to pay for it either. If you remember, Bayside had a, an angry group that didn't want to have the development at all because they were upset about a TIF agreement. And so they don't, he, he is not going to be in a position, he's going to be in a worse position than any of us if he had to go and add any of Bayside's money to the proposal to finish off the library. So it's in his interest even as much as it's in ours to make sure that private donations cover all the costs. Um, and then, um, the, uh, the last thing he, he said here, um, so there actually are a number of meetings also. And I've been invited to one, uh, later this week, but, uh, there've been a number of meetings with a lot of, uh, large businesses who might be interested in giving some substantial awards. Um, and so I was invited to join them for one on the twenty-sixth. Um, and so that, that's where things are right now. So there, there, there will be a number of signed agreements. I think we'll be in a, in a good position when he comes to see us at the second meeting in June.
All right. Thank you. And anything new on like the, the design? I know they have a couple of just like storyboard type, um, displays. I, I was curious if you've heard anything else on the, the architectural layout or anything that we can.
Well, actually I, I spoke with, with the architect myself last week. Um, and, and so Rinca is the architect that's been hired. And, um, he is working on, on finalized plans. Um, one of the hard things about coming up with all the plans, you know, when, when they're trying to do a capital campaign is, you know, he's getting a lot of input from people who are wanting to give money. So for example, if there's a Seelig Room, what does Mr. Seelig want that room to look like? And so if he has hard and fast plans at the beginning, then they're going to get tweaked and changed and tweaked and changed. So he's gathering a lot of input. But he will be ready. Obviously by the time the shell is done, there will be plans ready to go before Bayside's plan commission to be approved. Um, but he, I mean, they'll be ready long before that. But part of the, part of the, 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 the challenge right now with, with what those final plans look like is people who give large amounts of money also give opinions and, and design ideas that they'd like to see incorporated that their money is going to pay for. All right. Any other questions on the, on the library? All right. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Madam Clerk? All right. Uh, Mr. City Attorney? Okay. And, uh, Mr. City Administrator, it's your first meeting. Welcome.
No report tonight.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. And I actually don't have any additional report either. So. Okay. Then at that point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Alowed.
I can move out of Miguel Hart, second of Alderman Doherty. All in favor of adjourning? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Before you disconnect, Megan, I want to say to Brian Swanson, my ornaments were wonderful on my cruise. I waited till we were adjourned.
Okay. Still in the recording though, until she stops recording.
I understand. I understand.
Waiting for the.